...in Buckham District that has dreamed of becoming an engineer. This opportunity is going to be available here versus the loss of that opportunity if it's sent to the southern or far western end of the county. So it's the equal access and it served us well in the past with our former Career Education Center. And that has transformed. Those of you that have been in this system or have roots in this system years ago, you know that it started out as an accelerated learning center. And actually, foreign language was one of the key components that was offered here. So it's morphed different ways. It's time for it to morph in the direction that the 21st century demands for our kids. It's also sitting in the hub of those connections. And probably the best way for me to talk about connections is the next slide. Kristi. We've talked about non-negotiables. Actually, we talked about non-negotiables at the first meeting. That whatever the plans that were finalized, they must include this. Number one, they must integrate those four concepts across all areas of the curriculum. So we're not just leaving science or mathematics to be taken care of in your physics class or your calculus class. Those concepts have to be integrated into areas of language arts, into areas of social studies, across all aspects, including the arts, included in the areas of physical education and health. That was a non-negotiable. Number two, remember I talked about the center, the hub at our location? Here, we are within a fairly easy connection to UNC Asheville, to AB Tech. There are branches now of Lenore Ryan College here. There are branches of Western Carolina University here. Because the college and university connections are an absolute key. In other words, when a student enters into this high school, these have to be in place. There have to be opportunities for them through this STEM high school to attain college credit. Isn't interesting that the state, when they looked at the community college system and that consortium to allow high school students to get credits? Remember what happened with the budget? We had over 1,300 students enrolled in courses at AB Tech, were picking up credits in many different disciplines. Because of the funding, those were drastically reduced. But what was left? What particular areas did the state think was the most important to continue that connection for credits? STEM courses. We are extremely fortunate in the strong connection that we have already developed with a number of our post-secondary institutions, especially AB Tech Community College. That's a non-negotiable. This particular site allows that connection. Career apprenticeships and internships. Remember I talked about the broad representation of this planning committee? We had a number of individuals that represented various businesses, professional organizations. There's a reason. This is a win-win for them. In fact, one of the strongest proponents in Western North Carolina for STEM education is Advantage West, which represents the business interests here in Western North Carolina. When you look again at the pamphlets you have in front of you and you see who is represented in terms of the workplace here in Western North Carolina, you can see the fifth. Again, we sit in the hub where we have incredible access to a number of these type of organizations. Our dream is for any student that walks in this door, that chooses to be a student at this STEM high school, that we guarantee him upfront, you are going to have an internship, apprenticeship, you're going to have summer work experience. We're going to make those connections. And we're going to make them in partnership with people like Tupelo Honey, with people like the Billboard Company, with people like Grove Park, with people like Advanced Technology in downtown Asheville. We're going to make those type of connections. It's interesting to hear again what is being discussed at the chamber. The chamber is moving in the direction of doing exactly that, strengthening the connections for opportunities, job shadowing for our students in both the Buckham County and Asheville City school systems. So again, there's a reason for that representation. Technology. This has to be high-tech. And the reason it has to be high-tech is because the profession's demanded. When you look at STEM-related careers, technology is at the core. So as Tim talks to you about the facility, again, envision that we have to meet the technology needs. Our vision would be to coordinate again with those resources out in our community so when a freshman enters into this particular high school, there's an opportunity for a one-to-one initiative when they walk in the door. And that piece of technology stays with them all four years in this particular high school. And then the non-negotiable is the expanded stakeholder input. And as I've said before, that clearly our intent. We see a green light in terms of a nod here from the board. Our mission is to take this on a roadshow out into each and every community to make sure we're educating our parents and our students about what we clearly see now in the crystal ball in terms of the need for STEM initiatives. Now, I also want to address again regarding the site. It's important, and again, Tim will talk with you regarding the funding, capital funding for this. When we renovate, renovate this facility, we're going to renovate, we're going to do it right, and it's going to be 21st century quality for our classrooms. The advantage from a financial standpoint in one location is, I think, considerable versus looking at the multiple programs that Kristi's going to talk with you about, that you're going to see that this facility would house. When you start separating them and moving them out into the various areas of our county, you have to multiply the financial cost that would come along with that. Because these particular areas of instruction, again, high-tech is going to require renovations to accommodate what those classrooms will need to look like. And in this central location, we maximize, I believe, those financial resources. Now, I do want to reference before I turn this over to Kristi. I know at our last STEM meeting, and Ms. Ball, I hope you don't mind I use your name because Ms. Ball is a valued member of our planning committee, but she expressed a concern regarding the environment, the site, particular site. So I think it's very important that I give you as an entire board the facts regarding this. And I'm going to say, first off, three points I think you need to hear. Number one, regarding this campus, the campus we are currently on. Number one, we do not know if we have a problem. First, number one. Number two, more extensive testing is going to be determined, will be done to determine if we have a problem over the next several weeks. So we're going to take any concern seriously because safety in this school system is always a problem. But number three, even if we have a problem specific to the environment, the good news is that first, we are not or have not been on well water. And second, if an air quality or some type of vapor intrusion problem exists, it can be mitigated. We've spoken with multiple, multiple experts in the deal that it can be mitigated to create a safe environment. That would simply become part of what this renovation process is. But first and foremost, we don't know if we have a problem, but we're going to make sure by further testing. Now, I say that because I need to give you background, I need to give you some history with this. Because it's an important concern. First, you may or may not know that Buckham County Schools purchased the property that we're on. And it's important that you remember the address of that. It's 175 Bingham Road that was purchased in 1989. At that time, we did two phases of an environmental study. The result of those two phases was that they did identify close to the road above the maintenance area. They found an underground storage tank, this is back in 89, that was connected by a pipe across the street to what is the address is currently 128 Bingham Road. At the time, that was the inactive Square D plant site. That was identified as toxic and it was removed. This was back in 89. And all had documentation on this and we've had our attorneys go through the documentation along with us. But that was addressed in 1989. In the mid-'90s, both the former Square D Plant One, and that again, that's on 128 Bingham Road, and the former Champion Finishing Plant, that's right beside, again, across the road from us on 200 Bingham Road, they were identified by the state, North Carolina Deaner, as inactive hazardous sites. That's the term that they use, inactive hazardous site. And that was based upon what they determined to be groundwater contamination. In fact, I spoke with a Square D official last night that talked about, again, at that particular time, there was excavating that was being done across the road on that particular site. A large number, again, mid-'90s, a large number of monitoring wells were dug on those sites. And in fact, if you look inside, I've included a sort of a site map, and a little hard to read, but what I want you to identify, first off, I'm Bingham Road. And then you will see the markings for the central office and where a maintenance building, now rest. And in 1995, three wells, and their label was NW15. You look on our property, you'll see them just barely off of Bingham Road. And if you wanted to, even a further visual of that, if you drive out the back entrance of our facility, those wells would actually be just adjacent to the intersection of our road leading out onto Bingham, right there at the gate. So that's where-
Like a metal plane on the ground there? Or is it picking up somewhere too? I don't know if that-
The-
Two yellow pipes? No, two yellow pipes.
Right, two yellow pipes, and they're marked.
They're like a couple feet out of the ground, I think.
That's correct.
Can I just clarify something that you said? You said that the tank was toxic that was removed. What was in the tank that was toxic?
There was residue water that was coming actually from the plant across the street.
Was it Square D or was it-
Square D.
It was Square D.
It was Square D that was removed.
So what, there was some contaminants in the-
My qualitude as our Health and Safety Coordinator, Mike, comes from this background. He's very well versed in environmental concerns. Mike, do you want to answer that for us, please?
Well, I did not see the records on that, on that UST. I believe it was an old Eaton Oil, number two Eaton Oil tank, and all that remained was water at the top of it. I never did get to see the file report on that.
It was part of that phase study. Again, we have that, we have that documentation.
That was well before that.
Right. Yeah.
Can I- I have one other point to clarify. When Buckham County purchased the property from the central office, did they know about the patterns at the time or did that happen after the-
The issue was Square D and Champion, which I'm going to get to just in a few seconds. We weren't aware of that. It's a date issue. Again, realize the purchase was property in 89. There was an effort for environmental study, actually two phases of that. Again, in 1995, three wells were dug, three monitoring wells. And you see those side, there's actually a fourth one that's labeled as NW20, that was dug as well in 1995, just adjacent to where the maintenance building was placed. And that's the most important well from our standpoint. Because the documentation that we have, that we received from Deaner, is that when it was dug in 1995, there was testing that took place regarding that well. And we do know that that particular well, again, the one closest to maintenance, closest to our facility, it had lab results that came back as ND. And that ND meant non-detect, no contaminants were detected. Now, we're not aware, or is Deaner, that the well was ever tested again. And in fact, remember at the time, there was no maintenance building. That maintenance building was actually built back in 2005. In '06, we know that there was asphalt and painting done for the road, and it covered that particular well. That well, again, NW20, was actually the responsibility of Champion. Because again, what happened in the mid-'90s was both Square D and Champion were identified as NC Deaner, as sites of concern, and they were required to mitigate. So I think it's very important, as you look at that map, you know, I want you to notice and note the number of monitoring wells on both the former Square D site and the former Champion site. They still remain. There was a considerable amount of mitigation that was required by the state at that time. Again, this is across the road, and the addresses, 128 Bingham Road and 200 Bingham Road, across the road from where our current campus lies at our property.
Ball, just for clarification, the, because I know this is being recorded, just so that there's no- MW20 that you're referencing, I think is actually MW200, at least it is on my-
I think it's 20D. I think that last one was a D.
These things aren't apparently not helping. So that's a D?
Right.
Wow.
It's difficult to see.
Okay, so that's 20D.
That's right. Might also want to make the note that in April of 2005, 2005 is when our construction began, again, regarding our maintenance building. But it was also when Square D sold that property at 128 Bingham, and they sold it to the ASC Business Park. Also, might be interested in knowing that the ACS Business Park hosts the Federal Census Bureau. It's one of the, one of the organizations in our construction of new classrooms on 128 Bingham Road. And again, 128 Bingham Road is the former Square D plant site. And according to the letter, and I don't know how the confusion came about, but there was a call, didn't specify, but there was a call from a school board member, and from that, there was some type of insinuation that we were building classrooms across the street. So in large, we actually asked NC Deaner just to come on site. So they, we walked the property, made sure that there was clear clarification that no, we're on 175 Bingham Road. That's where our campus is located. That's where our central office is located. And we do not have plans to put classrooms on 128. We certainly don't want to interrupt the routine of the Census Bureau. So we made sure that there was clarification to that. Now, since that time, since that particular meeting, we have worked very closely with representatives from NC Deaner. And I also want to say that Square D has, Square D maintains responsibility, as well as the Champion Finishing Company, even though they have sold their properties, they still have responsibility for maintaining safety for adjacent property. So they have come to the table, they're working with Deaner, and we're looking at providing current testing, make sure that it's specific to our campus and what we're talking about with renovation. And within the next several weeks, Square D has gotten legal for me. Chris tried to explain this to me, but Champion had the primary responsibility, so they had to release that responsibility to Square D, I think, to step in and actually test that particular well. And in addition, again, as a safety precaution, what they're proposing for our conversation last night, Mike, with Square D, is actually drilling an additional monitoring well to make sure that we have- a safe environment for, for our kids. So again, we will actually be, in the next several weeks, they'll be taking samples out of that existing well, and then the intent also to do an additional effort for safety reasons. That's a quick historical.
Dr. Ball, do you know if they'll be checking if you have two wells that are on our property also, or just one closest to our thing?
Now, they have actually, my understanding is that they have tested the sites that are near the road. That's part of what's required on a monitoring basis. Now, whether all of those monitoring wells that you see on the map that belong to Square D and the former Champion, whether they test all of them on a annual basis, I don't know. But that's the intent also. Because they do understand that what we're looking at, and as Tim's going to show you, we just want to make sure that everything is as it should be. Again, just, again, just important to remember because having been an individual that lived for most part my whole life in walking distance of CTS and having, having that issue, which of course became, is a federal issue as well as the state, that the water issue in terms of drinking water, we have always used a city source for water, not, we have not known well. So if it comes down to the issue of vapor intrusion, that we need to make sure is checked. I'm sorry, Ball, you asked, did I answer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let me ask, I want to make sure I understand, the stories, the underground storage tank that we're talking about, was it on our property or the former Square D property?
That was on our property. And in fact, we spoke with Marshall Roberts, Marshall LeCain. I mean, Marshall was aware of that as part of what happened with the excavation. And as a result, that's what sort of moved into the two phases of environmental study to make sure that the site was clean. That was back in, again, back in 89.
And the monitoring wells on our property, the three monitoring wells that are on our property, two by the road, one here to maintenance apartment are, they were put in place when?
Those were placed, we think, in the mid-'90s to the best of our knowledge. That's what we've heard from Square D.
And how often, by whom, and how often are they checked?
There is monitoring that's been done. We know annually over the past 14 years, we've seen documentation of that. So now, how many of those wells, I can't-
No, I'm talking about the ones on our site. The ones on our site.
Right. I understand that those have been tested over, and Mike, can you help me with that?
Yeah, I guess I can, Doc. Where it gets a little complicated is Champion Finishing installed wells, they have environmental consultants.
Mike, can you put what Mike was saying on the audio?
That Champion Finishing installed monitoring wells that they own, that their wells are installed by their consultant. And Square D did the same. They did it on each other's properties, on their own properties. And the map you're looking at, MW20D, the reason we're having a hard time collecting a sample from it, because we're working with Square D on this project, MW20D is a Champion-owned well, and that's why we had to go through attorneys and everything to get permission to sample that well. The cluster there of MW15 wells, those are Square D wells. So Square D's, the sample shows on a regular, regular basis, I don't know what that interval is, but we, I haven't seen any of that information. So to answer your question, we have wells on our property from Champion and Square D wells.
So are there recent test results with MW15D?
There are. They were sampled by Square D and Deaner May 30th of this year.
And who did it test?
They, they did have concentrations in them. I don't have that, that lab down on Friday.
I had it. So 20 was never, hasn't been tested?
Has not been tested.
It's not that it hasn't been tested ever.
It was tested once when it was installed in 2005, it came up-
1995.
1995, sorry, it came up on the-
Thank you. Mike, explain regarding the distance with monitoring wells, the distance part of the facility, because that's very important to ensure it's-
The whole vapor intrusion process now, it's a new process. It was developed by EPA and it's just filtered down to Deaner, on a state level. What they have determined is they need data from monitoring wells within, actually with vapor extraction wells within 100 feet of your buildings. We don't even have monitoring wells. See, these MW's, they're not vapor extraction wells. I believe there's vapor extraction wells on the old Square D site, but they in no way affect us. So the process being, next Wednesday, we're scheduled with Square D, and with Square D Environmental Consultant, they're going to uncover MW20D and install another monitoring well closer to the building. And all you get there is you get groundwater results, and then you go into another process to determine where your vapor extraction well needs to be installed within 100 feet of the building. So this is going to, it's going to, it's a process involved with this. You don't just, okay, it's a-
Within 100 or outside of?
Within 100 feet of the building.
Right.
Determine if you're above these VI concentrations.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are these wells, do they- Are these wells, do they also function as far as cleaning existing water that's in there? Do they?
We are collecting water out of those wells, but they are. There's an active pump and treat system on the Square D property. It's been going on since the nineties, mid-nineties.
Can I also mention, Ms. DeCarlo from the Department of Environmental and Natural Resources forwarded the test results to me, and there's seventy-three pages because there's so many wells. I haven't gotten to the end of it, but monitoring well fifteen has two hundred and eighty-seven parts per billion of TCE. The safe level is five. This is, disfloors me. This is the worst well I've seen so far in seventy-three pages, and that's the one you said is on our property?
Did you say that?
MW fifteen is on our property?
Did you say that you have results for all of the, all of the?
I do. Well, except the ones we haven't tested. I just had asked her to send me that, but she doesn't.
And what you're saying is that our well is the highest of any of these wells?
That I've looked at so far.
Which ones have you, how many have you looked at?
Unless I notebook at home, I'd say I've looked over half of them. So I don't know about the rest.
The, do you understand what that means?
Two hundred and eighty-seven parts per billion of TCE.
In a groundwater?
Exactly. It's in the water. We're not drinking the water.
That's correct.
But we don't, and we don't have, they have not done air quality testing to know if there's any.
And what's the, what's the distance, what's the distance between the building and that wellsite?
It's about eight hundred feet.
And the, and the distance that NC Dean has regulation for with regard to vapor testing is within a hundred feet?
That's correct. That is a, and that's a monitoring well.
Right, I see.
Right. And not a vapor intrusion well, so there is a difference there. But the groundwater data in that MW fifteen cluster, it really carries no weight as far as vapor intrusion in central office and buildings.
That's what, that's what I was going to ask you, is groundwater, is groundwater monitoring indicative of vapor intrusion? That may be too broad a question, but it's plain.
Well, yeah. You dig, you dig groundwater wells to see if you have groundwater contamination.
Right.
And this whole vapor intrusion phenomenon, like explained, is a fairly new one, and Dean is still, they're still working out the kinks, and, but they've come up with this one hundred foot radius where, where if you're, you know, if your vapors are above certain concentrations, then you got to address them.
But if, if they need to test this MW twenty-D, which will hopefully take place, for example, then we'll have a little better idea if it's spread farther past that corner.
Absolutely. Or whether it's simply safe is what I've heard.
And I would imagine, you mentioned that there was the possibility or that there wouldn't be another well. I would imagine that it would be somewhere in the twenty.
That's exactly what we understand the plan is, because Square D has always, to my mind, has been a good partner with us, and they certainly have a good.
Any idea how long it would take to get those wells?
We're not. It could be up to, with immediate access, with the well there, possibly a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Is what we understand in terms of, you know, putting another well in, you're going to expand that, that time, but about two additional weeks, is that right?
Quick question, is, can you, I mean, I care more about the vapor in the air that we're all breathing right now. Is that something you can test, and has that been tested, and do we plan to test it?
Absolutely. I mean, that can be tested.
It can be tested, absolutely. The problem with just coming in with a handheld air monitor or something and screening the air is you get a lot of outside noise, is what they call it. You get VOCs, there's VOCs in this room right now from different plastic products and from paints and everything else. So you're not getting data that's relative to what the soil is introducing to the building. Does that make sense?
It does, but if there was a high level of something, it seems like that would show it, and it may be not from the water, it may be from something else. But that's non-scientific.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we can, you know, you can test the air, we can, we went to extend intensive air testing, whatever, between schools or all, and, but that, once again, that, that no way scanning is there with a handheld monitor, it's really not telling me what's, what we're addressing here, talking about with Dean as far as the soil.
Okay.
I have a question now. Has Square D been sending us those annual reports from the monitoring wells fifteen and fifteen D? Do they send this to Buncombe County Schools, not to Dean?
To, just to Dean.
Not in the county government, but on the.
I, I don't know the answer to that, but.
Who would know if the county was getting those reports?
I imagine Square D, and certainly SD.
What we may ask is, is appropriate time for have a representative from NC Dean, if they would come in along with Square D and answer more specific questions, because I learned enough to know it is a very complex issue. But what I want to assure the board is that we're, since being made aware of February eleventh, that we're working to make sure every precaution's taken, that we're doing specific testing on the issues, if the issues actually impact us in what shape we're in the campus. At this time, I'd like to turn this over to Christie, let her proceed on, and allow Mr. Fairley also to talk with you regarding this.
So the first thing, we're going to be interactive, you know. Now, I want to explain to you, I'll send your notebook first, so just take a walk with me through your notebook. We do have a copy of PowerPoint, we're going to be using it, it's provided, so you can take notes on it, it's in the front pocket for you. Also, we're, I'm going to reference some documents that will be in here, the state strategic plan is in there for you. We also have provided you a copy of the STEM network, and we're going to speak about that. We have some documents that we use within our committee, and there's a PowerPoint, and so when I refer to these things, I just kind of wanted you to know where they were. Okay? So we're going to get started, and I'm going to walk back and forth, you know, I'm very, I taught school, so I'm trying to interact with you, you know, forgive me. And our committee members definitely figured out that I'm a taskmaster. Often they ask me, did we have a side seat? You've even heard that from someone when we came in the building today, and they always thought I gave them homework a lot. I don't know how that was, but anyway. But anyway, so I'm going to ask you for an interactive survey just by hands, because we're not very, right now, on technology. Anybody have an iPhone? Okay, or a Droid phone? All right. So do you know, when you can speak into your Droid phone or your iPhone, that you can say a command and automatically, within a few seconds, you can have a destination button, right? And automatically, within three to four seconds, it will tell you what turn to go. What, do you know there is no app to design a STEM school? We have definitely learned that. However, the state board did provide us a great GPS roadmap for us to go by, and it was in the core of the state strategic plan. So the state Board of Education released a strategic plan, that is a K-12 initiative that we use, and you'll reference that in the front of your book, and through that became the STEM attributes that you see upon the screen. So before you kind of look at these attributes, I want to talk to you just a little bit about our K-12 STEM initiatives, and they came from race to the top, which many of you have heard, and our project lead the way initiatives in our middle school, Kay McCloud doing a fabulous job of SISMOs. We have Enquiry in Math and Science, and we just really are excited about, however I said, Math and Science SISMOs and Enquirer Day to Math and Science. Anyway, besides that, we applied as a system to join the state STEM network, learning network, and through that, we have these now attributes, STEM attributes, that each of our elementary, middle, and high schools will start looking at to see how we are going through STEM. You notice this green section over here. In order to apply to the North Carolina STEM School Program or School, you have to come over here on this Prepare or Target section. So this was our GPS, and this, you'll notice, the areas in black there are highlighted, and if you really look at them, they very much align with the non-negotiables that Dr. Ball presented to you. So this, if I could say a command and let it speak back to us on the roadmap, this was our roadmap that we work from. So I just, yeah, okay. So this was the one attribute. So then we want you to know who was on our committee. In your handbook or in your notebook, your, our committee members are listed, and yours is very colorful because they were split up by committee, and I just want to thank our two board representatives, Anne Franklin and Lisa Ball, and they were so good for us, and each of them provided us very good dialogue. They provided us good information, and I certainly do just say thank you to both of them. I probably pestered them a lot. I apologize for that, but I need your help and information. I keep saying, Lisa, I could have your help, and she would say, okay. So I do certainly appreciate them, and I truly hope that they have shared their experience with me. Also, we had Buncombe County School educators and staff, so at this time, if you're in here and you represent Buncombe County Schools educators and staff, would you please stand? Thank you for your commitment so much to this committee. It was very important also that we had our business and industries represented. So we had tremendous representation, not only from key business, our chamber was here, I was so very, very thankful. So if you represent our business and industry community, would you please stand? And Jessica here from the chamber, so we certainly appreciate her. Our post-secondary partners, we were so blessed to include them and have them on this committee to guide us. They did a phenomenal job, and so anybody representing post-secondary, if you're here, we will just say thank you and say, thank you for that opportunity. And then two government representatives, and I know Holly's here, so I'll ask Holly to stand, and we certainly did appreciate her. And we also had a connection with the governor's office, whom we've been keeping in constant contact with as well. So those were our committee members, and they gave countless hours of time, countless hours. And so I just truly, truly thank everyone for their support. They, I tell you, I would say, you're going to see emails from me, and I know when that came across their screen, they probably went, oh, there's the email. But they worked hard, and I really do appreciate their commitment to this committee. Suzanne, we'll speak about the timeline, and then we will be back for some more interaction, because it does get exciting.
From your notebook, Janice, you will see that we did spend a lot of time researching what we wanted our STEM schools to look like. We visited other sites across North Carolina, such as Harvard School of Technology, the Weaver Center, Philbrook Berry, Hopewell High School. We've been teaching the digital generation. Margaret Small is our researcher in the curriculum department, and she provided many, many articles for us, so we really tried to be very broad in our research base, including we had various speakers come to speak with us about different STEM initiatives. Dr. Sam Houston, the president and CEO of the North Carolina Science, Technology, Math, and Education Center. Dr. Tony Habbitt with the New School Project. Dr. Bureau Harrison, the Chair of the State Board of Education. All telling us what their vision of STEM across North Carolina would be. We spent a good bit of time in our committee work. We have worked this summer refining what we're presenting with you today, and we're up to the August boardwork session. In the meantime, we are working on curriculum offerings. The facilities plan is changing daily. Jan is thinking about marketing, and how do we take that roadshow out to the community and share with the community and get their input on what this new school will look like? We are trying to do that in the fall, and then we want construction to begin in spring. We'll be busy as, as you can imagine, if this school makes forward, as we hope it will, we will need to identify a principal and have a face behind that. As we go out and meet the families and stakeholders, they need to know who's going to be leading this wonderful new school. Again, more marketing, more informing the stakeholders, and then going in and recruiting the very best teachers, because this building will look different. It won't be a traditional kind of school and classroom setting that we all grew up in, and we will need time to recruit staff students and then do a lot of professional development. And then the summer will be orientating all of those who will be coming here and starting hopefully next August. As I mentioned, curriculum and instruction will look differently, so we'll link the leadership will share with you.
Christie, as you said, is good on the homework thing, so we're breezing through this to meet our timeline. If you do have any questions about any of this later on, then we would like to address those. Talking about the instructional approach, how is this high school going to look different in regards to the instruction, in regards to what goes on in the classroom? Well, we're going to really focus on project-based learning, and that's pretty near and dear to my heart, because I was a former career tech teacher, taught electronics and metals technology, and we really focus on project. But when you think about project learning as a math application, the science applications, the language arts, and the social studies, all of that coordinated and integrated together for project-based learning. Guided inquiry, I was in probably one of the most intense professional developments of my career last week with our science folks, and there's something put on through the Smithsonian Institute, it's called the Laser Training. Jan was with us for, Jan Webster out of Risa helped put that together for our region, and it was a great, great focus on science, and the guided inquiry method of learning science really helps with the student's understanding, not only what happens, but why it happens, and that's really important. Group work, learning to work collaboratively, problem solving. There's a couple of videos, just the links referenced here on the PowerPoint, we're not going to take time to play those today, but they can show a little bit more information about the project-based learning, and also the bottom link that's a little longer, there's a video about New Tech High School, and that's the type of vision that we're looking for in this school. But again, as far as the instructional approach, we're going to focus on collaborative work. We're also going to focus on a blended instruction where we're integrating core subjects and content or related to the real world to make it applicable for the students, and that will help prepare them for making good decisions as they go about the problem solving. Mr. Knox lives here from, from our early college, and they have an intense focus in that small school environment on teaching and learning. In a small school environment, you can really work with your staff, your administration, and everyone together to develop best practices on teaching and learning. An example of that would be the Rounds Model of Professional Development with the teachers. That started in the, in the early college over on the AB Tech campus, and now is being replicated in some of our other comprehensive high schools in the county, and that is what we're looking for with this STEM school, to be a small school environment that is innovated and leads to better education for the students that then can be replicated in our comprehensive high schools as well.
So I, Jan Webster's in the back, she was on our committee. I don't think you stood, but thank you so much. So now it's time, because this is kind of like our unveiling, and it's so exciting to me, because this is what it's been working so hard to get to. So while Lila's pulling the chart, here's enter action, under publisher, I mean, under a PM. If I have to ask you, Bob, to give me a word that describes Asheville, what would you say? Now, Bob, maybe I should have started at the end. Beautiful. Eclectic. Okay, eclectic.
That's what I was going to say.
Oh, okay. Come on.
Great.
I just think of his home.
Home.
Unique.
Unique.
Quality of life.
Quality of life, I'll take it. Beautiful. Okay, here we go. So all those qualities are there. So when we designed this concept of STEM school, we really looked to act as a workhorse development model and we came up with community innovation and sustainability as an overarching GVE. That was what you said. You got there just in a different way. It's very, very important for students to be able to be economically survivalist. In this day and age, we cannot equip students any better than ensure them that they have transferable skills that they can take out with them. We do not know in 20 years what skills they're gonna need. Did you know in 20 years ago what skills you would need now? You didn't know what iPad would need 20 years ago. But you're thankful you took typing, remember, and typing. That's a transferable skill. We just got to ensure that we replicate whatever we can do for our students. So we're very excited about this because what we wanna do is bring back our students who maybe go away. It's different than to go away to school, but we wanna bring them back and make them a strong part of our economy. So when we, as the committee thought about Bunkin County and Asheville, about the words you said, we think of the job market and what kind of jobs will be in this area. And truly, if you think of applied engineering and technology, you see that with our best manufacturing partners, that wonderful gaming community that we have, we can hit this highlight. And then we're all about hospitality and tourism and environmental studies. And we can definitely see ourselves as sustainable tourism. So this is exciting for us. We want this STEM school to replicate what our community is, that we're gonna ensure economic success for our students. So with these two overarching things of applied engineering and technology and hospitality and tourism and environmental studies, and you'll notice for future consideration, it's innovative and innovative sense. Now, you can cheat. This is in your handbook in the back, okay? But I like it up here. So through an effort of project leading the way, which is already in our middle schools, and please note, and I know this is a linear model, but please realize this will be fluid, okay? And ever-changing, but this is kinda what it's gonna look like. So you just kinda have to go with me here. So you might have students that love engineering and they may be able to take this engineering kind of piece over here. Or they, we desperately need to ensure our kids can look at computers and programming, computer programming if they must. So we might have kids all set. In the food science world, there's nothing better than knowing how E. coli starts, okay? And that's very important. So we have that in there too. And how many of you own your own business? That's fair entrepreneurship. The Chamber has a five-by-five initiative, but overlaying everything is entrepreneurship. We have to make sure, you know, that that's in there. And then over here, it could be climatology, but we might have a student that loves forensics or biotech and agri-science or whatever it may be. We want the possibilities for them to be endless. This is a key component shadowing internship, internship. We have to make sure that our walls are not closed here, that community is our resources and our student learning doesn't stop here in, out there in that real world. Often the time, it's better to figure out what you don't like to do than what you like to do. Why don't you point to you? Anyway, also our partners, and we know that extension will go with AB Tech, NC State. Students can take courses from different, many partners, including the North Carolina School of Science and Math, where we desperately need to tap those resources as well. So we're very excited about this model. Think about a company wanting to come to Bunkin County and just can say, we have a STEM school that can equip our students, you know, bring your business here. It always hits home for me when in the newspaper, the true test of the career builder, when Eaton Corporation is running ads and they need engineers and they need AutoCAD and they need Microsoft, this is where the rubber needs to rub. We may need to make sure we're teaching our kids what they need to be equipped. And the date of that would be? Oh, yeah. This was June 24th, 2013. That's kind of the concept chart. Please know it's fluid and what it looks like there, you know, opportunities are gonna be endless for students. So that's exciting. Yep, Lila's gonna know with what we know. And we don't, this is just what we know.
Okay, what we know. Opening fall 2013 enters our goal. When we open up though, similar, very similar, and we've learned a lot through the rollout of early college. It's not to go, we can't go full spell, all four grades at one time. But what we like to do is roll in 75 ninth graders and then invite 25 of the 10th grade class to also be a part of that first cohort here. And again, because this is a different school, the different curriculum, we really though refer to all these, all these students as year one attendees. The academics will be a variety of blended courses, college courses and honors courses. And we talk, when we talk about blended and integrated, an example, and nothing's set in stone there, our curriculum department will be working very hard on the design of these courses, but also collaborating with other, other educational entities such as the North Carolina School for Science and Math. Our own early college is a good example that is, that is blended courses. But we may have a language arts and a social studies class blended also with a heavy integration of technology to accomplish three goals there. And that's some key, key to the design is to have some integrated courses. Students can either choose a major, and you sort of, you saw a little bit of majors on the chart that Ms. Cheek presented there, but don't feel like that's gonna lock us in. That is an example of how a student could progress to the school. We also want the students to have some flexibility to explore an alternative course based on their interests. Now, we'll, we as a school system, we will have to help that student match those interests with educational opportunities, but again, going outside the four walls of the school, looking at post-secondary education partners, both in the surrounding community and through distance learning. We're also in the, in the exploration about being a hub or satellite campus for the North Carolina School of Science and Math. They have some pretty exciting opportunities available through distance learning that we wanna take advantage of. Health and PE, you know, you look at that bullet and you think, okay, why, why is that there? Ask Tim. When you've got a design to accommodate a physical education class, it throws another wrinkle in the business, I mean, in the business of designing a school. And it is a North Carolina graduation requirement, not only the physical education portion, but also the health portion, those are graduation requirements. One of the things that I wanna point out though on this slide while we're still talking about the blended courses, we will be seeking innovative status for this school. And we're exploring different methods of doing that because that gives us some of the flexibility to, to design the curriculum in the best interest of the students. We've talked to a gentleman named Rob Hines with the Department of Public Instruction. He is sort of our contact with DTI in this process. You've also heard a reference to Dr. Sam Houston, who's the president and CEO of the North Carolina Science, Math, Technology and Education Center. That's another partner that we've explored some options with. And then Dr. Tony Habitz that Ms. Smallman also spoke about with the New Schools Project. So we're looking at different things, ways to do that. Okay, all year one, when we're talking about our, our curriculum offerings for our students, we really wanna give them a foundation in year one, and I use this description when I talk to students counseling, I've also used this with my own children as they gone through school, to build a strong rigorous base that allows them lots of options in the future. And part of that would be the foundations of information technology and the introduction to engineering. There are concepts taught in introduction to engineering that are easily transferable into many career paths to learn how to think of how, you know, how you design a solution to a problem. That's actually in all sorts of career paths. All students will have an individualized graduation plan. We wanna work with the students to help them design how they're gonna graduate from high school. We will still have to meet North Carolina graduation requirements, but exactly how we nail that down and what we provide for those students, we hope to have some flexibility. Again, part of that is becoming an innovative high school. That's, that's the world we're living in. But that technology, not only one-to-one, but also as we're using it as teachers, as we're presenting information, but part of the collaborative work is to take the teacher away from the presentation station and have the student at the presentation station where they're solving problems, they're presenting their solutions to their peers and, and working together with that. But again, rigorous early grade levels to prepare that problem base and then options for the senior year. I think Ms. Cheek referenced moving outside of the four, excuse, having opportunities to individualize by going outside, and I'll mention that too. Options for their senior year because of that problem. You see all that different options we're exploring? Too much to read out.
So in your packet, there is this chart that we will, I don't, we'll just reference this and go on. This is a chart we're very excited about because it does show all of our partners and our connections as far as majors and chances, our opportunities for our students. So it does look like a post-secondary connection either through college and career promise, online, being able to earn college credit while in high school. Also, our community will buy in and we know it's very, very important to have a great mentorship, internship site where students can work out there in that field, get that wonderful job experience. Anybody, do you remember, now those of you who are educators who did student teaching, so it's kinda coupling to that. And again, it's better to figure it out, maybe before you go spend all your money and figure out what you like and what you don't like. So this is valuable, valuable work experience for our students and to be able to place them in our business community and open up our doors and then open up their doors for us, we're very excited about these chances for our students. So as far as next steps, we do know we have to survey our stakeholders with our parents, students and our community. And then of course, it's marketing and getting that word out to the parents, students and community. And we know that's gotta be our next step. We just needed to get this concept chart out, get it to you, let you see the work that our committee has done. We're very excited about it. It is something we have been working hard on and we're certainly ready to get ready for the future. So we hope y'all see the excitement and the hard work and I will tell you that we're ready to rock and roll. So Tim Fearley, if you'll look at my last slide, it's just the excellent prompt into Tim and going forward in the building for the future. So he's gonna come and then at the end of Tim's presentation, I'm gonna ask Lisa and Ann if they would like to present anything from the committee or give input on what they think. So, Tim?
Good afternoon. I'm gonna take you for a little tour of the facility here. Really held off putting a design out there and let the committee kind of develop the concepts before we kind of rushed to conclusions. So right now, this, this design is out there kind of being vetted by our directors. We've got comments from the committee and I think someone said it's changing on a daily basis. Well, it is, but in the details really, I think the big concepts that I'm gonna show you are pretty accurate and seem to have held up to the, the comments that we received. So we started with assumptions and this is a repeat of a lot, a lot of the things that you've heard already. So I'm gonna kind of quickly go through these because we're a little bit behind, but I'll hit some highlights here. This school may operate 16 hours a day, six days a week. That is, adds a real challenge, I think, to security and access. The, the functions of the school, we plan on kind of three main curriculum strands. It doesn't mean when I show you the plan that you can't walk across the hall and use spaces associated with the other strands, but the, we're trying to produce some things that are unique and supportive of the individual strands. We have to provide PE onsite, that is a big one. Pro Start is a food service program that we're planning. It uses more residential level equipment. It's not a, a full culinary program like you might see at AB Tech, but it is rigorous. Kids wear uniforms and we hope to keep that from center. What you won't see in the plan is something labeled a media center. The innovative school designation will allow us to vary, not only in the curriculum, but in the facilities to support the, the curriculum that is occurring. Technology is going to be so ingrained in this school that the media center is basically everywhere in this school. Probably the big point I'd like to make here is that in designing a traditional P-12 school, the classroom is the basic unit. That unit is repeated over and over. It may vary slightly by grade level, but the classroom is the biggest, is the, the basis for design. In this school, the group spaces are, and we're going to offer a, a big variety of collaborative spaces, large and small, and the character to support these student-led collaborative learnings. So I'll orient you here on our building. We are right here in the board auditor, or the board auditorium, yes. This is the old CEC area and primarily we're locating this school in that area. It's a high base space, 29 feet to the barrejoist. That's a blessing and a curse. It makes some aspects of construction difficult, maybe more costly, but it's a very flexible space. So it really will accommodate what we're trying to do here. There is a mezzanine, maybe not everyone knows about that, but that's where our child nutrition department is currently located. They would be located out of there as well as our testing department that is, is right here so that we can keep isolation between the administrative uses and the school uses. And again, remember that six days a week thing because kids may be in internships. We need to maintain an isolation, not only from the administrators going in there, the public going into the school, but also from the school, kids getting into the administration area and off hours. The biggest point is the former CEC entrance was right here and the kids had their cafeteria here and then dragged through and threw into the CEC and the administration was going this way. There was a lot of intermingling of the two that we're gonna try to avoid by, first of all, locating the new STEM entrance in the rear here and, and keeping STEM in this area and keeping the admin out here. We do have our maintenance department and the technology department on the perimeter and a few other uses on the perimeter that could ultimately become expansion area for In order to meet the deadline, we're gonna need to phase this project. Those are the three phases I'm proposing. This again is this STEM area here. So in fall of, of 2012, we need to start demolition and relocation and get kind of a head start on that. And that's kind of the area that would be involved. And then phase two would conclude with occupancy for that ninth grade and partial 10th grade in the fall of 2013. So if the entrance is here, we can draw a pretty good line and, and separate the, the students that are, are here from construction activities that will be ongoing here. There's a number of things like an elevator that will need to be put in that takes a long, long time to do. We couldn't finish that in time. Also, the commercial kitchen area is in here. That is, that also has kind of a, a long lead time, difficult to complete by fall of 2013. And then the final phase would be this, and it's, and it's full. And then the final phase would be this in its full completion. I'll show you a few of the spaces in here. There's a mezzanine, so in the, in fall of 2012, we can do demolition and do some work, but that wouldn't be available for Phase Two. It would be available in Phase Three, the completion, ready for summer of 2014 and fall of 2014. So here are some of the spaces. A student center. That is going, we're going to use terminology that's more like AB Tech and junior college terminology than our typical schools. We're going to raise the bar for them, but there will be a student center and it'll be a meeting place. It'll be a place to eat and to bring in students, our stakeholders, and after hours time we can isolate that from the rest of the school if need be. The advisory center is as close as we can get to a media center in this school, but really what its importance is, is this, these Ts around here are where the teachers' offices are. They're not going to be closed offices, they're going to be open offices. Spaces will be shared because we'll have some adjunct teachers coming in, perhaps some folks in the business area, but this is where the students meet the teachers. We're calling it an advisory center. It's where that student project can be proposed to a teacher or if some additional help is needed, touching base, because these kids will be working in or in a group format. Then we have a number of smaller spaces. The seminar area is here will be flexible and will be set up probably as close to a classroom as we'll have in this school, but it'll be tables. There won't be any student desks, individual student desks. There'll be configurable tables in a seminar format. And then we have group rooms for the collaborative learning in these areas. Then we have very small group rooms. These that came in here are for those individual groups, two, three, four students that are working on a project together where they can go in an acoustically isolated area and hash out their project, our view, and come out of there with a game plan. Distance learning, we heard how that's going to be important. Not only will it be important that these kids have the option of getting distance learning opportunities that are outside the walls of the school, but we'll have the capability when this becomes a successful school to broadcast distance learning perhaps to our high schools and to others to take advantage of the unique classes that are offered here. Scale Up is a, I'll show you a picture of what this looks like. This is a concept of collaborative learning that is taking hold across the country. It was developed by a professor at NC State and it is group learning with heavily laden with technology. There's a lot of argument and debate. It's a larger space. There's multiple groups that go out and solve a problem, then maybe come back and present to the larger group outside of their small groups. We have to provide some sort of PE and we're proposing a gym natorium. That's, it'll have a stage very similar to our intermediate schools, except it'll be more half of a basketball court size with a sports floor. So it's a multipurpose space, but it also can be an assembly space for presentations. Proposing that we relocate this board auditorium to a larger space that can be available here. It's a very unfinished space. This is something we may want to bid as a bid alternate because it's not absolutely necessary for STEM, but it would be a multipurpose space that could serve the board, allow appropriate videotaping, good acoustics, decent seating, some kind of low-rise elevated fixed seating with some area that we can put additional seats in if we have a big crowd or a performance space. It can serve STEM for their largest presentations in here and it can also serve the larger administration area as a meeting and presentation space as well as for teacher development. Then the labs, those are the things that are unique to each of the strands where they have specific equipment. So say engineering has a robotics. Well, that equipment would be housed in a lab here. Perhaps you'd design it here, move across, and this would be more workshop-like where in the communications or computer or technology side, their lab would look more like a computer lab, gaming, graphics, those sorts of things. And we do need to provide a dedicated science lab for chemistry and all those uses as well. We have some administration space in the vicinity of the student center and a kitchen. And then some peripheral spaces that are around it. Testing is currently housed in here. We would relocate. Newcomer center or students, we'd leave them there and they probably would end up eating in the student center. Not as concerned about the mixing of those kids. We still, we think we have these warehouses over here, but we need warehouse space. So we've preserved right now two warehouse spaces that we can continue to use and if in the future STEM is very successful, we need more space, perhaps we build a metal building out here somewhere for the warehouse space needs. Teacher training area, we already have a computer lab. Perhaps some of the teachers are adjunct and need a little update on this new teaching model here and what they're going to see, what we can do, can have a training area within there. We've relocated conference room A and B to what is the, what we're calling now conference room C. We do some upgrades there for acoustics and such. And then if the board does locate to this auditorium, then we could have conference room C in this location. Take out the daisies and the elevation and this would be an excellent room for countywide meetings and such. On the mezzanine, we produce another strand where we have similar things that we saw down below, but on a slightly smaller scale. The learning lab and we need to detail exactly what this, what's needed inside. We haven't gotten to that point yet. So here are some images that have been sent to me by our committee members that we've gathered from research and such. What we've heard is this needs to look and feel different. It needs to be a dynamic field once we're in here. So the student center is a big meeting place. It's the, functions as the cafeteria, but also for study on laptops and group meetings. Advisory center, again, is where student meets the teacher for individualized guidance. Our group rooms have a variety of sizes. You can see the collaborative learning is a theme that we visit over and over again. Small group rooms, so perhaps we'll use some shipping containers like they've done here. Put them up on the mezzanine and blow out the ends, put glass in there so you can see the action, but it's acoustically isolated. It would give that, that kind of industrial, high-tech feel that I think we need to promote in here, which will be much more cost-effective than doing a very fit and finished facility in a high bay former warehouse space. Here's the Scale Up Room. This one's, I think, at the University of Minnesota. Again, NC State is where they develop, but you can see these collaborative spaces, a lot of technology they can tap into these and then show the rest of the students what, how they're dealing with the project. The teacher's desk is typically in the middle and they may start out with a very small lecture, but the students quickly get into the small groups and problem solve. The learning labs will be unique to the uses, so if it's food service related, it may look something like this, but if it's technology related, it may look a lot more like the computer lab that we're used to seeing. Distance learning, the connection with the outside, two-way connection with the outside. That's critical. It'll help us meet those core requirements as well as expand this program to other schools. So we have a lot of questions left and I won't go through these, but we've got a lot of detailing that still needs to be done, a lot of questions to ask, but I think we've got a game plan that will house very well the STEM plan that the committee has developed and that curriculum has developed. And if the board chooses to proceed, we'll continue to develop these details and insert them into our plan. Question?
When we vote on it? Proceed with the plan?
I'll have to. What we intend to bring to you in September is a request for approval to access lottery funding because that will be the primary funds that will be used for serving vast majority of funds in the capital building itself. So we'll be bringing this to you in September along with your approval regarding accessing lottery and also will be required approval with commissioners as well as documentation with community college partnerships as well. So that will be coming to you in September and we'll put a lot on the table today. But again, our mission is to take this, if you are showing us a head nod in just in terms of approval, taking this out to our communities and talking about the importance of STEM and giving them a preview of the direction that we would like to go. Official approval, the key is going to be approval from this board to access those lottery funds, which we've been extremely fortunate, I've said this before, in terms of capital, financial resources to lottery.
Is it possible for you to send, the rest of the PowerPoint, I think, is in here. Can you send PowerPoint that you just did to all the members?
I can send it to you or I can post it on the website. What would you prefer?
Both is fine or either.
Both?
Yeah. So the public can see, but I, so that I can study that where the rooms are and I've got a feel for it, but we'll do it and they give us some time between now, all of us some time between now and September to look at that. You know, at 10 o'clock, nine or eight, whatever time we want to, own laptop and.
If I want to go to sleep?
Yeah. If we've got questions, we can call you and say, hey, what exactly does this room, this terminology mean in this space, just so we can have a good grasp of that.
And the time it also allows us to bring back more specific information regarding, you know, a number of issues as well. I know we're going to be shifting to an entirely different area, but we have had some very patient members of the committee that came in here. I just want to give them an opportunity and apology and see you here and then a last opportunity for our two board reps. But anything you would like to add as many members of the committee?
I just, I'm just here to show support and I do think that this is the future in terms of our economic development, our future. And so I'm really excited about the integration of this potential educational framework with, you know, our economic future here in our community. So it's been, we've had good leadership and I think it is ready to take the road, the show on the road and I think that'll be the next important feedback to get is where the community is with all this too. So that's my excitement to be on the front, on the cutting edge as Buckham County usually is.
Thank you.
I have to say from an economic development standpoint, our business community is hungry for this. We just had to respond to a request this week that asked, where are we getting this type of student from? And they wanted us to demonstrate that because this particular client was going back for investment, looking to grow their business. And they said, well, we're looking at a different part of the state. Why should we stay in Western North Carolina? And one of the reasons that we proposed was this is a possibility within our community. We have to have it.
I'll say Mr. Mike and Chip referenced last week when we had the National Science Research Center from Smithsonian come out and worked for a week with teams from all across the Western region. We had 16 school systems that designed a five-year science plan, including Buckham County, and that's all that they talked about. And it was really neat to also take the teachers out to some of our businesses, Borghornar, Eden, Biltmore Estate, the Germ Plasma at Biltmore or no, Bend Creek Institute, if you haven't seen that, that's amazing. But it was really neat to see the excitement from the teachers and also hear the national impact of what's going on. And this is really right on target. We talked to Borghornar in particular and they're looking for those engineers right now. I'm excited. I have a sixth grader and I'm really excited that this might be a possibility for her.
Please bring from this hall, if there was anything you'd like to say.
It's exciting to work with members of the community in an educational setting and to see and get the feel for what's out there. And I really appreciate the opportunity to do that myself, but also to have that connection so that I can see, I don't always visualize well, so I can actually see out there what's available. And it's exciting to be at a place where we can provide this for our students. We give lip service, well, not lip service. We talk about the 21st century and what those skills are. And this is the 21st century and what the skills are. And to be poised to provide that for all of our students, I'm proud of our system for doing that all year.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring up from the viewpoint of a board member, I think STEM is, you know, something that's long overdue in Buckham County, this type of school. I think it's an excellent idea. I'm concerned about what I call the elephants in the room. The fiscal implications have not been discussed. They haven't been vetted by the board. In fact, the board wasn't even approached to approve at the start of this whole process, which I've described in detail before at board meetings, that the circumventing of the board rather than coming to us first and getting approval to start these projects and getting our seal of approval on that. I think we're scurrying the whole environmental issue here with this building and there's a lot of questions to be asked. Why hasn't anyone done any testing in the past, knowing that we had vocational students here, that the CEC was here, we have the newcomer center, we have students coming all the time? And we have 287 parts per billion of TCE and a monitoring well very close to the building on the property. This sounds like a cover-up to me. Why wasn't anybody investigating this? Do we really care about our students or do we care about our appearances? Speaking of appearances, at the committee meetings, I experienced going through the motions of getting stakeholder inputs. I didn't see any of it put into the actual plan in here. We talked about parent interest surveys being very important. I thought we should have learned something from the Coats Intermediate Experience that we did not start looking at parents till construction started on the Coats building and we had many unhappy parents. We still do. We ended up probably spending a lot more money than we would have normally because an elementary school model was what was proposed for that building and parents were like, no way we want unified arts for our sixth graders. We want band, chorus, string, string orchestra, all those things that they would only have in a sixth grade experience. So I think I am, I bring up the concerns that were never addressed in these meetings that were brought up. What about music? What about fine arts in a STEM high school? Those are questions parents want to know the answers to and they want these things for their kids and the kids desire these things, to be a well-rounded person and find their niche. And sports, we're not even addressing, you know, where would the sports program be? And here we are talking about starting construction in December. And when I say fiscal implications, what I've heard is $4 million proposed for the renovation and using, now I just heard the lottery funds potentially. But Buckham County is in debt by $140 million for school properties. And, you know, we're not looking at the big picture. This all sounds like cosmetics to me, that, you know, we're trying to get good PR, but before we can build something like this, we've got to dig deeper. Nobody talks about collaborating with UNC Asheville. Many UNC campuses have high schools on the property. You know, why was this never even run? Why did we just start with the central office and not even look at other options? There's schools within a school. Right here, we have Asheville High School with a school within a school. We can't keep spending money like nobody's business. We have to look at living within our name. We have to look at living within our means, and even making maybe a better choice if we do, you know, utilize the university's resources by being on their campus. And you can see this collaboration happening with private colleges, not just public universities all throughout the state. We're on the back end of the curve when it comes to starting a STEM high school, and we've got lots of great models out there to look at. Another concern brought up in our meeting was that there was, everybody was looking at STEM schools within the state of North Carolina. Well, if you just saw the recent results, I think it was US News and World Report, the top 250 STEM high schools, not a single one was located in North Carolina. If we want to compete globally, why aren't we looking to these schools for models that are the top schools? You know, I see a lot of problems here. I think this is the kind of vetting that the school board should have done initially, you know, and maybe look at these different collaborative efforts we could have had with AB Tech, UNCA, the school within a school. We have excess capacity in our existing schools. We have got to iron out our attendance lines, we need to look at redrawing those. We've got so many issues that we need to fix before we can even think about starting a new school. I can't even imagine. We created unintended consequences by building the intermediate schools, because now we have under crowding, under enrollment at Valley Springs and Can Creek Middle School. We are not maximizing the efficiency of our facilities. The school board needs better data to make decisions with, and we're not getting it. So these are things I'm going to bring up tonight at the 6:30 meeting, and we'll be making some motions in these areas. But again, we need a STEM high school. I just don't know if this is the right direction. I know it hasn't been vetted by the board.
Ms. Hall, Ms. Franklin, I know we need to go ahead and transition. I don't think most of you people have been involved at every meeting, representing this board in the process, having the opportunity to convey your concerns throughout the entire process, and all the law stakeholders that we're pointing out tonight. And I do want to end by saying this, tonight you're going to hear a presentation from Mr. Jeff Gorsuch regarding our ABC performance from previous year, 11-12. And I did a quick look and state that, because all the performances are now available via the way across the state. What you're going to see, you're going to hear tonight that Early College is an innovative high school, similar to what we're proposing here. 100% of their students that are exceeded standards in academic performance. I don't think that's just not in here, but I don't believe that's ever occurred in the history of Buncombe County since the ABCs have been in place. It's incredible. One, and again, I may be, this is quick man, because I was trying to run through all 115 systems at schools, but I truly believe it's one of 15. But the key is to look at the 15, and what you're seeing of those 15 with that type of performance, and if you move it up to 95% to 100%, what you're seeing are schools projected just like this, the specialized, the 21st century, the curriculum, the instruction that we're hearing. So again, I, we'll be bringing certainly much more information to you, and we'll be addressing concerns we heard tonight, we'll be bringing you those specifics as we always do. That will be coming to you via email over the month, and certainly at our next board meeting, we'll be doing the presentation. So this time, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Fairman. So we're going to transition to... Go ahead.
Before Holly and Jan and...
I think I called Steve and Holly.
Yeah, Jan, come back in and...
Yeah.
In spite of what I think may have just been stated by one board member with regard to her opinion, it appears to me that 39 members of this committee did an excellent job, including all of the representatives from the various school systems, which included individuals from UNCA, AB Tech, and one of the other secondary, post-secondary schools. I want to thank you, as a board member, I want to thank you for the work that you did and all the other members of the committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to transition to an update, and we've got Michael Shore here from FLS Energy. He can tell you where we are and answer your questions regarding it. Michael, we cut your time really short, so you can kind of get through. I think we need to be out of here by 5:00, right? Yes, so it's quarter to 5:00.
No problem, I just brought a few slides with me. And let me say, I heard the economic development person talk about a company that was threatening to leave beautiful Western North Carolina, that's not us. And I am very excited about this STEM school. We have 70 employees here, and these are the type of students, or these are the type of people that we hire for, in our company. So let me, just before I get into the agenda, I'll just show you some pictures of some projects that we've done, just so you get a sense of what we do. We are a solar development company. We develop commercial-scale solar hot water and solar electric projects, and we have, we're headquartered here in western North Carolina, and we have projects coast-to-coast from Wilmington all the way to San Francisco. And in fact, here at Camp Lejeune, we're putting solar on thousands of homes, providing our military servicemen energy. And then I share this one with you to connect with the STEM presentation that you just heard. This is about 20 minutes away in Haywood County at the Evergreen Packaging Facility. We have about four acres of solar panels and a 20-year contract with Progress Energy to sell them, the electricity. And we regularly have high school students come out and tour this facility, and we'd love to have STEM high school students do that and do studies on this technology, which is becoming very much a part of how we meet our energy in the United States. Okay, so very quickly, Tim asked me to give you an update, so I'm going to cover three things in just a couple of minutes. One is the project timeline, just what's happened, key questions that you might have on anticipating those, and so I'll answer what they are, and then a brief touch on that point three up there. Just to remind you of what this project is, there's a solar electric component, which is 200 kilowatts, that's about a three-quarter of a million-dollar project, and then also a smaller solar hot water project as well. And you might remember from previous discussion of this project, that the way FLS Energy works is we develop the project, we pay for it, we finance it, and then we earn our keep from selling the energy that's generated from the project, as well as any incentives out there, we take those. And just, so you know, we have hundreds of projects that we have developed, and here's just a sampling of projects that FLS Energy has developed and owns in western North Carolina and elsewhere. And so this is a great win-win, where we're providing energy to our clients at less than paying for conventional energy, and certainly creating jobs and helping the environment as well. So the project timeline, in the summer of 2011, FLS Energy submitted and won the RFP that Buncombe County School System put out. By the fall, we had developed a preliminary design for the solar project, and then, and we started our process, or continued our process, to find a financial partner to develop the project. And so naturally, key, you know, if this is a close to a million-dollar project, it is critical for us to have financial partners to develop the projects, and so we were very much engaged in that research, in that search in the fall, and through the winter and summer. And unfortunately, we have not succeeded in finding the right type of investor for this project yet. In the winter, there were some limitations regarding the Progress Energy SunSense program. You can ask me questions about that if you like, and here's where we are now. We had a particular financial partner in mind, they backed out in March, and so we are still in the process to cultivate a new investor for the project. And we are unable to develop a project without an investor. So I have three questions that are probably on your minds. First is, why can't we proceed at this time? And we, as I just said, we do not have a financial partner lined up. There is certainly a possibility this year that we can get a financial partner lined up and do all a part of the project, and we are targeting also to work on this project in 2013, if it doesn't happen this year. The challenge, a challenge, just so you all, you know, understand what's possible, is as solar becomes more mainstream and more accepted, the financial institutions out there have a tendency to want to invest in larger and larger projects, where a few years ago, million-dollar projects were very common for banks and other investors to put their money into. Today, the solar market gravitates towards projects that are much larger. So that's kind of the challenge for us, is that this project is smaller than the target that's out there. In some ways, it's almost a success of the industry, where, you know, five years ago, there were no solar projects, and three years ago, a million-dollar project was a large project, and now, you know, $10 million, $100 million projects are commonly being developed in North Carolina and across the country. Okay, just a couple more slides. So what are the prospects for Buncombe County schools to get solar going? I'd say, in the near term, it's challenging. There are only a small handful of companies in North Carolina that have the financial and wherewithal to develop and own projects the way that we do. Certainly, the school system is always welcome to purchase the project on your own, but like many of our clients, you have capital that you want to put elsewhere. So when you're able to have a third party come in, kind of like a utility, develop a project, own the project, and then you buy the energy for, you know, an equivalent or lower cost than your conventional energy, that's a pretty good deal. And so we still hope to be able to provide that service to you, but that may or may not be the case. Over the long term, the prospects are good. The costs of solar are declining dramatically. It's unbelievable what is happening to this industry. So here's my last two slides. One is, just so you have a sense, FLS Energy Incorporated in 2006, the cost of a solar panel, solar module, was about $3.50 a watt. And today, you know, and this graph goes through 2011, today we're buying solar panels at less than a dollar a watt, 85 cents a watt. It's going to go down to 65 cents a watt by the end of the, the end of the year. So there's just an incredible amount of success in the industry. Certainly, we hope we can bring that success to the Inca High School project. And then lastly, just to give you a sense of what is going on in North Carolina, five years ago, there would have been no bubbles on the map of North Carolina. Now there's incredible projects, you know, from military to homeowners to businesses all over the state, and so our country is very much in a transition of getting energy from a wider variety of sources, coal, nuclear, natural gas, propane, wind, and solar are coming up and are very much now a part of how we meet our energy demand. How's that? All right?
You have one minute.
I have one minute, okay. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them, one minute.
Just so I understand, in looking at those dots, the numbers that are associated with our side are improved a lot.
That's right.
Was there any work done on putting solar panels on the Inca High School roof at all?
Was there...
If you've done any work at all in the high school.
No, we don't, we do not even have a contract signed with the school association yet, so we haven't done any work, although there's been planning work and design work, but no physical work that we've done.
Have we paid you anything?
No.
Can Mr. Campbell answer a question about, we spent, I believe it was $56,000 on this project, and plus all the roofing that was done that was not in line to be done yet, that they had to do it for that, do we have any legal recourse?
I will give attorney-client advice to the board in class session like we always do. We don't give attorney-client advice in class session. So we'd be happy to address those with the board, as we always do in class session.
Well, I think that there's certainly, you know, there's other options that we can pursue. We have an honest amount, the total amount that we had subside for the solar project, as part of that was the build phase of it.
Did we spend the $13,000 on the attorney's pay for negotiating a contract?
I don't know where the $13,000 is taken from, again, you call, I think there was $13,000 budget for some engineering.
Well, the construction phase for our architect to oversee the construction.
I saw that for negotiations.
There has been no $13,000.
Well, I constantly ask you for a detailed, itemized list of what we've paid you, and I have not received it.
The board has not asked for a breakdown of this particular item. We have done some negotiations with FLS, and we'd be happy to talk to the board, but there was the $13,000 hanging there.
And just to clarify, by now, the list of the work that's scheduled this year, so we did it a year ahead, or is there any work under?
How much did we pay Ledgers and Architecture to do this study? $116,000 to do a study. And they recommended we spend $8 million at Inca High School on putting in a whole entire new HVAC system, tearing out the walls to put more pipes in, instead of just buying a boiler, which is common sense. We can't afford to make $8 million in renovations there. And to put the rooftop solar on, and that was a profit-making enterprise by FLS, we weren't going to get anything out of it at all hardly, we're going to get $4,100 a month out of this. And now we've spent, you know, I said at least $116,000, and it's over $200,000 if you added the roofing. I'm just incredulous.
You know what's so funny, is if we hadn't done that, who'd have said no?
That's not true. I'm incredulous.
You'd have said, why haven't we done the study? Why haven't we done the research?
No, I would never say that, because I voted against everything. I voted against every phase of the study. There were three phases of this study. No, you can't, because I'm talking.
I'm kidding.
But taxpayers deserve answers. This is incredible. $116,000 down the drain, plus those roofs. I want to see a favor.
The work session is over, thank you.
Take the thread out.
That was crazy.
Action. Pretty lovely. Pretty lovely. Psych watch your professional rest.
What's that?
Psych watch my rest, ladies. That's a bull's eye. It's a real civic.
How are you?
Great, how are you doing?
And shatter up.
I'll take credibility where I break the bond.